Introduced in both chambers and they've all had subcommittees today. So we're very excited about that. I guess there's maybe three buckets of types of bills that we could talk about. There's some that are related to cleaning up reporting requirements, pretty technical in nature. For example, I've allocated one at the top, changes their reporting requirements. It just consolidates it all into one report rather than having reports scattered throughout statute. And to be producing 20 reports in a year, they're not going to do one. Some code cleanups to the workforce, ready economic development fund, reporting practices. And then the one related to the Commission on Educator Leadership. That one is actually removing that report because there was changes last year through House File 68, which where now districts don't have to provide us with that information for their TLC programs. And so there really isn't much to base the report on. So we're proposing eliminating that. We have a couple from the department related to one therapeutic classroom transportation claims. This one, there's three buckets of funding that we get for the therapeutic classrooms. One is an incentive fund grant, one is transportation reimbursement, and then there's a standing appropriation to provide ongoing support for therapeutic classrooms. The transportation reimbursement fund has been underutilized over the last couple of years, largely due to the parameters in statute for how we are allowed to distribute those funds. And so this proposal just simply says if there's money left over in that pot, let's put that over into the incentive and try to encourage districts to provide therapeutic classrooms to their students. And the one about the state standards, this one's pretty straightforward. As you all are familiar with the state standards process. In code, though, it says that those standards are supposed to go into administrative rule. And historically, we haven't done that. So we're proposing a cleanup that would keep the process as it has been and just remove that reference to rules about what that process looks like. Then lastly, there is a whole slew of the proposals from the Board of Educational Examiners that I can run through quick. One relates to my row, House File 430 from last session, mostly focused on investigative processes, including processes related to an investigation of nonlicensed staff who are alleged to have committed a felony. This, the language in that bill reflects the organizational structure pre-alignment. And so it assigns some functions to the department and some functions to the Board of Educational Examiners. And post-alignment, we're looking at and saying, well, these are all responsibilities that are best assigned to the Board of Educational Examiners. So shifting responsibility so that it's clean and clear who is responsible for completing that investigative work. There are, there's one about the transitional coaching license, which is designed as a short temporary license, where if there's a vacant coaching position, schools can quickly fill that position with someone who has this transitional license. And they can hold that position for one year while they work towards their full coaching authorization. This, there's, there's a part of that transitional coaching license, however, that is kind of serving as a barrier to entry. It's a, it's a short course, 15 hours. The content includes, is included in the full coaching authorization. So it's, it's somewhat redundant. And so the idea here is to make sure that we keep that process streamlined as possible, remove that, that short course that they will get later on as they seek their full authorization. There's a couple more, and they're all kind of related, even though they're proposed as separate bills. We had the one related to confidentiality, where currently BOE files investigative materials are kept confidential. And they're even prohibited from sharing information with law enforcement, which is not, which is inconsistent with how a lot of other licensing boards operate. So the proposal related to confidentiality simply says these materials will remain confidential. However, if the BOE finds that someone committed a felony in the course of their investigation, they can put that material over to law enforcement. Another one related to inappropriate relationships that would allow the BOE kind of breaks up the definition of what constitutes an inappropriate relationship with a student. Right now, it's kind of one catchall category, but this would provide a little bit more nuance saying if there is a romantic friendship or otherwise inappropriate relationship. And it also adds in a definition of grooming, that sort of thing. So it allows the BOE to be more focused and targeted in those investigations and exactly more clearly define what types of inappropriate relationships are being alleged. And then the last one related to the statute of limitations. We actually just had a sub on this about an hour ago in the Senate, would allow for complaints or allegations that are involving inappropriate relationships with a student. It would allow, it would exempt those from the current three-year statute of limitations for BOE investigative complaints. There is a code change a couple of years ago related to criminal law that removed that statute of limitations for sexual exploitation of minors. And so this is inconsistent with that practice saying if this happened to you that you only have three years to report, we're suggesting that in those instances, people be able to report beyond those, those three years. So again, that one just had a sub that passed out a subcommittee. It was a good sub that actually had some people call in who were victims of sexual exploitation by teachers. And they talked about how right now there's a good cause exemption in statute that the BOE was allowed to exercise in certain situations. But how, because of how the statute of limitations worked, the BOE investigation was really their only recourse for this individual to try to hold them accountable for his behaviors. And, and just how grateful they were that the BOE was able to do that. The BOE investigation in Iowa led to another investigation in Illinois, which resulted in this individual being, losing his teaching license in both states. So, so these are all, like when you just look at them, they're all very straightforward bills. But several of these have the potential to have quite significant impact. Any questions? I know that was a lot. Quickly.
So there was a bill that was introduced or discussed in the subcommittee where they're looking to shorten the length of student teaching.
Yep. Yeah, that was one of the governor's proposals.
I'm happy to provide some additional clarification on that. It's not to shorten the length of student teaching, it's still 14 hours. It's instead to recognize individuals who are authorized paraeducators or substitute educators to recognize their experience in the classroom. If it was in their relevant endorsement area and if they were primarily responsible for instruction, to recognize that experience as a part of student teaching.
It's 14 weeks, right?
It's still 14 weeks, but up to 10 weeks could be your experience as a paraeducator or as a substitute teacher if it was qualifying experience, meaning in the area of endorsement and primary responsibility.
Any, any movement today or any further discussions about AEA's?
Not today, not recently. There was some movement in the last couple of weeks. There were some committees held in both the House and the Senate. And the Senate advanced the bill. I believe that was just last week they advanced.
Questions for Eric?
Yeah, next week's funnel week. So that's the first of the procedural deadlines, which winnows down the scope of legislation under consideration. So House bills have to be out of House committees, Senate bills have to be outside of committees, then it flips. So it's kind of the first big deadline of the session. It'll be a busy week next week.
Any updates on the boards and commissions and committees?
Oh yeah, I read that there might be a proposal. Again, that comes from the governor, right?
It does. I thought that legislation was filed, correct?
It's in state government.
What's the bill number for that now?
I have to look. I don't know off the top of my head.
What does that mean when it's on state government?
That's a funny smile sign too. Is it in the Senate, you said?
I believe it was filed in both chambers. I just don't remember the bill number off the top of my head.
So it would go through state government committee?
So do we know what the proposal is for the Board of Education?
We have to probably look at the bill. I think Eric, can you, are you going to get the?
I'm doing my best.
If you didn't have the bill, I would.
I'll try to track down.
So you can look at the bill.
I just didn't hope you knew already.
No, no, I think it will give Eric a few minutes and maybe if there are any additional questions on his materials presented, happy to respond to those. Otherwise, we'll have Eric look back after our next.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, State of Educator Preparation Report.
Thank you for your time having us here today. We have a short presentation on a report that was shared with you to go over some of the highlights of the report. But feel free to ask follow-up questions. We'd be happy to help with that.
She got the chair.
I did. I'm just glad I didn't end up on my back.
Shut up, please. There's no one here, so.
Part of the training.
What goal was that?
Getting a new chair.
Done. Done. Yeah, that's right. Goal five. Goal five. At least put a marker on.
Yeah, it needs to be like words or something.
Danger.
Did you have to put that down there on purpose?
Yeah. So as you know, the report that was shared with you was including the 15 steps that we take for continuous improvement and review of the programs. We have highlighted seven steps that we take two years before the site visit and a year after the site is here on this slide. The programs start with a self-study and also meet with other programs and educator preparation consultants to do a self-study and also ask their question, making sure that they are in compliance. Then they prepare an institutional report, including their evidence of meeting the compliance. And we also send out survey of stakeholders prior to the site visit. We utilize the institutional report and survey results to do a preliminary review and ask some questions prior to the site visit and be more efficient during the visit. After the visit, if the program can meet all the compliance, be in compliance and meet the concerns that might have been shared in the initial reviews, we recommend them for approval. And we do a follow-up visit that year, the year after, and a follow-up, followed by annual reports after that. There's a little bit of lag there. Okay, the second state board goal to improve teacher and leader preparation relates to diversity. First, our rules and standards require programs to provide diversity exposure and experiences alongside preparation to serve diverse student populations. The Teacher and Paraeducator Registered Apprenticeship, commonly referred to as TPRA, has supported the growth of a diverse candidate base. In the 2023 reporting year, we saw an increase of an additional 750 paraeducators recommended than the previous year, so 750. We are on track to meet the anticipated goals and are grateful for Governor Reynolds' vision and support of this successful program. We just concluded the Dyslexia Workshop series that began in August. As visually displayed at the, displayed at the bottom of the slide, this effort was to provide faculty with resources and professional development to identify and meet the needs of students with dyslexia. The office hour meetings, I'm on the right side, right? Yeah, our office hour meetings include segments to strengthen the preparation of candidates to work with diverse populations. The training component themes for this academic year include mental wellness, classroom and behavior management, as well as differentiation.
One question before you click off of that. If we go back, anticipated paraeducators, 816 summer fall, 249 in spring, and then 750.
We actually, I shared the results with you. Yes, when we prepared this slide, we didn't have that data, but now we know that we have met that goal because we have had over 1,000 paraeducators recommended for certification.
Very good.
This next slide shows the type of educator preparation programs that has been approved in the state of Iowa. So just an overview, there are three region universities and 26 private institutions who offer either elementary or secondary or both preparation programs for teachers. There are 25 paraeducator preparation programs approved in Iowa. Eight institutions offer professional school counseling program. 10 schools offer administrative preparation programs. One of them is an alternative pathway. And there are approximately 14 other, other programs that has been approved in Iowa and preparing the educators. This next slide kind of shows the trend of educators prepared in the past 10 years. As you can see, there was a drop between 2020, but in the past two years, and that was a national trend, but in the past two years, we have had growth and improvement in the number of teachers that were, that were prepared and recommended for licensure. We hope that that number continues to improve as the educator preparation programs also work on the alternative pathways and accelerated programs.
What's the national trend mean?
I can.
But.
The comparison of number of teachers prepared 10 years ago, like if you look at number of teachers prepared, there was, there was a certain point that there were number of candidates going into the higher ed were dropping. So we also experienced that in Iowa, that number of candidates were not as many.
These are Iowa numbers, right?
These are Iowa numbers.
So I understand that it went down now and Iowa's coming back up. Is the national trend coming back up too or not?
I have to check that. I think it's not going up, but I have to check that. It is on the title too. I would be happy to check that for you.
Are we still going to be experiencing a teacher shortage? And I mean, probably just nationally in Iowa, just because of the retirements that are happening probably in the next five, 10 years?
We try to collect the data that would give us a good idea. I would say there are some schools that don't report shortage. So it's very important to pay attention to what are the jobs that are not filled? What the educator preparation programs try to do is to accept, encourage candidates to apply and work towards endorsements that are areas that schools have had harder time to fill. Those who work with TPRA program work very hard to specifically address the areas of shortage. So I can tell you that much that there is a hard effort to prevent or try to address that. And the school districts are also very active working with the ed programs now within similar programs at TPRA. So that's, that's what our goal is to prepare as many as we can and encourage them to go into the field.
The, the data presentation from the last board meeting that Jay provided has a lot of good information about actual vacancy numbers. And we have seen the number of vacancies go down slightly from last year, which is of course a positive trend. And of course, you are also aware of the multiple opportunities in addition to TPRA. So licensed reciprocity, multiple routes to licensure, the CTE concentrator, the, the subject area expert pathway, the native language speaker pathway, which are potentially contributing to that reduction.
Thank you. This next slide shows some of the efforts that our team has taken to continuously improve our efforts. And that includes some cohort meetings and site visit resources that we provide programs going for a review. Has tremendously improved the review process. We provide feedback prior to the site visit and ongoing to the programs as they develop different pathways. And in alignment with the governor's executive order 10, we did a red tape review, which we have streamlined our rules, cleaned them up, combined the things that, the different chapters that could be combined. And the initiatives in the second column under program support include providing resources and data-driven professional development of the lower performing areas of preparation in Iowa within our office hour meetings. The mentor mentee initiative was something we started this year by sending out a call to experienced chairs and deans to mentor newly appointed leaders. We also offered new department chairs and deans workshop to help them know what are the, what are the rules and requirements for the preparation programs that they need to be aware of. So they're not kind of trying to explore that on their own. Last year, our team worked on, in collaboration with the K-12 department, the division on offering paraprofessional grants provided for individuals to become a paraprofessional. And as a result of that, we have had over 1,000 paraprofessionals being certified. We continuously analyze our rules to understand the needs of the districts, the needs of the K-12, to align the higher ed expectations with those. And we also attend conferences and interact with other states and some of the initiatives that they are taking to make sure that we are also, also present a lot to them that they enjoy knowing the things that we do. This next slide is just an overview of the number of candidates prepared and recommended by the educator preparation program. So you see a lot of the numbers in this report that is from the preparation programs. But that second chart also shows the BOE numbers of candidates recommended for licensure. So like Director discussed, there are so much more than what is prepared in Iowa that are applying and receiving the licensure that is presented in the second chart. All right, this slide provides a visual representation of the number of Iowa teacher program completers that's broken into categories of the number recommended for licensure within that reporting year. In the first and second teacher completion categories, we have 18 programs that produce approximately 500 new teachers per year. In the third and fourth columns, we have 11 programs that prepare approximately 1,700 new teachers annually. Let's see, this slide, or I'm sorry, our yearly data from the novice teacher and the novice teacher supervisor survey is represented by the highest rated areas of preparation in the first two green columns and the lowest areas of performance in the blue columns. The category of well and very well were utilized for both the higher performing and lower performing categories. Overall, novice teachers continue to report a high level of preparation in Iowa to teach. Both new teachers and supervisors rated the preparation for collaboration, reflection, and lesson development as high. Teachers, novice teachers perceive their content understanding as a positive, while the supervisors rated technology integration as the highest, highest level. In the lowest rated areas, both teachers and supervisors agree that increased preparation in both differentiation and assessment would be beneficial.
And you'll of course notice the synergy between Anne's presentation and priorities as well and the need to better prepare pre-service educators to differentiate for students who are English language learners.
Excellent. That was a perfect lead into this slide. This slide is utilizing data from our Educator Preparation Annual Report that includes student teacher assessment data that is reported by both university supervisors and K-12 cooperating teachers. The first area of strength reported by 58% of our programs was professional learning and ethics through both growth and reflection. Learning environments was reported by 48% of programs, which includes learner engagement and technology. The third highest category is leadership and collaboration. Moving to the areas of focus or needing improvement, standard three learning environments was included by 58% of the institutions as a low performing area. You will notice learning environments is both a strength and an area needing some attention, but the subcategories within those standards are different for both. The learn, let's see, the learning environment subcategories included classroom management and improving learning spaces. Also rated as lower performing was assessment and differentiation. The last slide includes a sheer count represented in parentheses that institutions who included those specific initiatives as priorities for the 2023-24 academic year. Four noticeable trends indicate that programs are, one, exploring alternate pathways; two, educator preparation alongside recruiting efforts; two, increasing partnerships and collaboration across the state; three, updating curriculum; and four, increasing or modifying existing clinical experiences. We thank you for your time today and happy to answer any questions. And if more information is needed, we're happy to work with the director to get you back.
I see the upward trend.
Isn't it? It's very exciting.
I think that's the only frame I'd add to President Robbins is, of course, you all know that we've articulated for, for the department, a top priority being to strengthen and support a strong teacher pipeline, both through recruitment and retention. There's multiple legislative proposals, including Governor Reynolds' proposal to increase the statutory minimum for new teachers from $33,500 to $50,000 and to create a statutory minimum for experienced educators at 12 years or more of experience at $62,000. During a strategic planning session in Council Bluffs, the board also articulated its interest in taking a look at our teacher prep program rules and accreditation standards. So we thought that this was a good level set to begin that work and that conversation.
Do we have, and just remind me, forgive me if I, I don't have this in my brain, do we have an Iowa teacher workforce analysis to go along with this of being able to see comparing kind of placement of teachers with teacher prep or kind of the demographics of our teacher workforce? So we compare new teachers coming in with potential succession of teachers retiring from workforce and kind of comparative urban and rural. So when you talk about how you have to be thoughtful about what's happening in different school districts and even thinking about kind of the ELL challenges and kind of all of those people. So kind of that in-depth analysis of workforce trending with teachers.
I'm going to try to answer your question. Let me know if I don't, but based on the data that we have, we get this survey of novice teachers and also the program analysis of their own responses. And so with those, we try to make sure that we are paying attention to those when we review the programs. And programs also have access to what we post as areas of shortage, which thanks to Director Snow, we have improved our reporting. It's now included from the PETS report. It's directly reported by the district. These are the positions we were not able to fill. So we align those and tell the programs that these are the areas by how many that the, the districts were not able to fill. So they have that understanding. A lot of time we get the program approval requests, requests based on those needs if they don't offer that program. But if they do offer, they would encourage those candidates to go into those areas because they will be qualified for federal and state forgiveness and loans.
Thank you. And that's all critical context.
And then also to your point, building our teacher data pipeline collection and ensuring that we have better information to inform our teacher pipeline supports, including in where vacancies may trend, what districts vacancies may trend in. It is also a part of our effort to strengthen teacher pipeline.
Do we have data on the, because I think that, you know, the teacher preparation program was supposed to help, I think, diversify the workforce. So do we have data on the diverse workforce that's creating? So like the new, the ones who've been recommended, I mean, the demographics of those?
I can look into what BOEE may have. We don't collect that data necessarily. We have some reported through the title too, but I should be able to find that more detail for you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much.
Eric, can you answer the question?
Yes.
I don't know, can he?
Maybe, maybe, I'm sorry.
Triple confirmed, it hasn't, as you said, I was confused.
It hasn't been? Oh, okay. Mine. Okay, thank you.
All right. Saving the best for last.
Too bad. Appreciate that, John. And we are certainly aware that we are the last team between you and a beautiful day in the low sixties. So, but excited to talk with you today about our community colleges. I'm Jeremy Varner. I head up the community college and post-secondary readiness team here at the department. And with me is Amy Giskey, who heads up the community college section and oversees our data team, who is unavailable to be here today. So you'll get us kind of giving you the overview.
Well, that is online.
Oh, wow, thanks.
If you ask really tough technical questions, he is there to help. But we'll give you the, give you the quick scrape here.
That's a lot of trust in me, Jeremy.
Sure. So we're going to talk with you today about Iowa's system of 15 community colleges, specifically giving you an overview of data from the 23 academic year. The full report will be coming to you by mail after the meeting, but we'll give you the quick highlights. In addition to the report, keep in mind that we have a suite of data visualization tools on our website that you'll with that, you can sort of dig around and manipulate the data to find anything that you need. With the community college council, we're trying to move away from static publications toward more data visualization tools that can be more timely and allow you to find what you need in more sophisticated ways. They're really neat useful tools. And we'll can come back and talk with you at maybe the later date about what we built out there. As a reminder, since 1998, the condition report has been our flagship report with comprehensive information about Iowa's largest system of higher education. The intent of the report is to provide clear, objective data about Iowa's community colleges for policymakers, governing bodies, other stakeholders. The data is primarily based on the community college management information system that's administered by the department, but also draws on a number of other data sources. Attempt to capture the full breadth of what community colleges do in this report. So data on credit and non-credit enrollment, student demographics, credit and non-credit programs, enrollment of high school students, distance education, adult education, tuition, and student financial aid, student success and outcomes, human resources, college financials. So the full, the full breadth. Keep in mind, this is annual data. So last fall, I talked to you about the fall enrollment report that was as of the fall term. This is older data, essentially, the 22, 23 academic year, but it's more comprehensive and broader. In this data, you'll see the bread and butter for Iowa's community colleges, which is preparing Iowans for rewarding careers, closing skills gaps, and preparing the workforce, whether it be through career tech programs, transfer programs, adult and non-credit job training programs, or programs for high school students. Last year, we saw notable growth in joint enrollment and non-credit job training headcount, and most importantly for us, student success rates. Graduation and transfer rates are both up this year, about two percentage points each. With that, I will turn it over to Amy. We'll take you down the cut.
All right. So it's good to be with you all. My name is Jeremy Sid. My name is Amy Giskey. I'm a section chief in the Bureau of Community Colleges and Post-Secondary Readiness. And I'm going to walk through some of the major data points in this year's report. Starting first with credit enrollment, this year we saw credit enrollment level off, down just 0.3% from last year. Since peak recession era enrollment in 2012, there's been an average annual decline in enrollment at about 2.3%. And that's in line with national trends. But the decline has been slowing as we saw at the fall 23 enrollment. There's just a slight uptick, so we hope to see that in next year's annual report. Credit hours are holding steady with a 0.05 decrease in student credit hours, so almost even. Credit hours totals a little over 1.5 million with an average credit hours of 13.1 per student. Looking at credit student demographics, those numbers mostly held steady as well when compared to the previous years. When looking at gender, the percentage of female credit students was up just 0.2%, with females comprising 56% of our credit student population. That mirrors historical numbers as well as national numbers in community college enrollment. Nationally, women make up approximately 59% of credit enrollment, so we see slightly more even split in Iowa. Minority student enrollment was up 0.4% on the credit side over the previous year. And that sets a record high again. We've seen a record high the last few years at 24.7% identifying as minority status. Median age also held steady, a median age of 18 this year, same as last year. And that compares to a national median age closer to 28. So that's quite a bit of a difference for Iowa.
Contributed to the
Joint enrollment. Yes, it's pulled down significantly by our high percentage of joint enrollment students. We have among the highest number of jointly enrolled students in the country. So now we'll move to non-credit enrollment. On the non-credit side, we also continue to see a rise in headcount. This year, we served over 157,000 non-credit students, which was a 4.1% increase. And that follows a 7.3% increase last year. So we've been seeing a steady increase in our number served. An additional 6,278 students served this year through non-credit programming. So while we saw headcount increase, we did see contact hours decrease by 5%. So just over 5.5 million last year to just over 5 million contact hours this past year. The majority of those credits continue to be in health sciences. That's by far our largest non-credit field. Looking at who comprises our non-credit student population. Unlike our credit students, who are majority female, non-credit students are evenly divided by gender, with males representing just over half of the non-credit population. Looking at race and ethnicity, 22.4% of non-credit students reported identifying as minority. Of those, 81.9% were black or Hispanic. This is a smaller percentage than our credit population, which is actually 24.7, which might seem odd. I think it's partially because we have many more students on the non-credit side who choose not to report their race or ethnicity. But both populations saw a 0.4 increase in their overall minority student population. Okay, now joint enrollment. This past year, over 52,000 high school students enrolled in joint enrollment. This is up from over 50,000 the previous year, so a 5.6% increase in headcount joint enrollment. Those students earned over 460,000 credit hours, which is an 8.5%. So credit hours are going up in addition to headcount on the joint enrollment side. And not only are we seeing more students enroll in joint enrollment, but these students are earning more awards. So we'd love to see that. Last year, our joint enrollment students earned nearly 2,500 awards, which was a 32.3% increase. This is an area in which the department is investing energy and resources, and we hope to see continued growth in awards earned in the coming years. In total, joint enrollment students comprise 45% of all headcount enrollment at our state's community colleges this past year. That's a record high. At two colleges, NICC and DMAC, joint enrollment students accounted for over 50% of their headcount enrollment. And we have six colleges where they were over 30% of total credit hours. So it's a significant population served by our community colleges.
Is there any data on joint enrollment and kind of what happens after they complete that in terms of like, do they go on to get four-year degrees? Are they graduating early? Like, are they going to college for four years? Are they going to college for two and a half years? Are they saving? Are they going out into the workforce? Like, I mean, and because I mean, I think the whole purpose of this is that they, I mean, if they do go get a four-year degree, that maybe they, you know, have already completed a semester or a year, they can save money, right? Or they can just go out and start working. So is there?
Yes, absolutely. We actually put together a report last year on joint enrollment student outcomes that answers those questions you described. If we missed any, feel free to probe us and we'll add it into a future report. We will be back in March to talk to you about joint enrollment. We have a sort of a special report then. But yes, we do look and we track those students onward. We do know they have shorter time to degree, higher student success rates, all of the things that the research suggests they should have. We do. It doesn't mean we don't have issues with the program. We absolutely do, but but it absolutely does those. We do track them and I will send you the report after the meeting.
Thank you.
You bet.
I would say additionally, we just conducted a couple of years ago, conducted comprehensive research that compares post-secondary achievements of jointly enrolled students, students with jointly enrolled experience versus those without. And it's online, a table version of visualization that tracks jointly enrolled students for eight years after high school completion compared to their peers without jointly enrolled experience. And that does prove everything that Jeremy just said. They complete their post-secondary education faster. They enroll in larger numbers and everything else. It's online. So we can also provide the link.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to online enrollment, credit enrollment. We had over 68,000 students who enrolled in at least one online course, which is a slight decrease of 0.6% from the previous year. On the non-credit side, we saw a significant decrease, so nearly 49% of a decrease in online. So having worked in the online space for a long time, I was curious kind of what COVID did with our online enrollment numbers. So we looked a bit at that. As you might expect, online enrollments were kind of slowly ticking up prior to COVID, massive increase with COVID. They've decreased since, which what you would expect. And now they're at slightly above pre-COVID levels. So we've seen, we'll see if that continues, but that was the trend. Okay, this year, our community colleges collectively issued over 18,000 degrees, diplomas, and certificates. That's an increase of 5.6%. So this is what, why we do what we do is to issue people their certificates and degrees. So it's nice to see that number increasing. The overall increase is due to a 22.3% higher number in certificates. So we've actually saw a decrease in AA degrees and AGS degrees, but we're seeing more students complete certificates. Perhaps even more important than the total number of awards is the award rate. So that's the number of awards earned per the total number of students. And we're seeing that award rate increase. So that increased from 14.9% to 15.7. So more of our students are earning degrees. This slide breaks out that type of degree in more detail. For the second time in our MIS history, certificates are the top award at 30.8%. Transfer degrees, the AA and AS degrees, account for 38.5% of degrees conferred. So that matches national trends as well, with more people wanting shorter, shorter certificates and credentials. We are supporting that effort as much as we can.
To say, and are we offering more?
The colleges are responding well, I think. And they're trying to stack them so that someone can earn multiple shorter certificates that will stack into a full diploma or full associates and hopefully, you know, bachelor's wherever the student may want to go.
You see it in both the non-credit and credit side, short-term, non-credit ones and short-term credit ones and the flattering of them. So the sequencing, non-credit training into the credit programs.
Looking at our credit enrollment by program type, you'll see that 40% of students show up as no program of study. The vast majority of those are the joint enrollment students that we've been mentioning. They typically do not have a program of study identified. And then the remainder divide relatively evenly between arts and sciences and CTE. Almost both right around 24%, which is a more even split than we've seen in the past. Historically, it's been slightly more CTE and we're seeing a more even split. Our colleges collectively offer over 1,400 CTE award options. So I think, you know, very nice array of options available to students in the state. Moving to non-credit, as I mentioned, we saw that 4.1% increase in student enrollment over the previous year. And like we saw with credit awards, non-credit awards also are up. They increased by 3% with over 44,000 students receiving over 54,000 awards this past year. Majority of the awards, 76.1% for industry-recognized credentials designed to lead to our enhanced employment opportunities. So that aligns also with another priority of the department. Enrollment in non-credit courses is disaggregated into nine program categories. One of those categories is enhance employability. That has the highest enrollment with over 84,000 students taking courses. 53.2% of all of our non-credit students were in a category that they classified as enhancing their employability. So that's why they're taking the non-credit. And if you add in our adult education learners, it would total 63.6% of our non-credit enrollment. Folks seeking the non-credit learning to improve their employability. Moving to adult education and literacy, the colleges continue to see growth in our adult education and literacy enrollment. It was up nearly 9% this year and it was up 17.7% the year higher. So like non-credit, we're seeing nice growth in adult education and literacy. Our online adult ed decreased 33%. So I think that's largely because after COVID, our adult learners are getting back into the classroom where they're mostly better served. Enrollment patterns are returning to those levels. ABE, so our adult basic education has the most enrollees, 51.8%. And then English as a second language is at 48.2%. I would say that's another area where we're seeing ESL increase significantly. There used to be much more students in the adult basic education, fewer in ESL. ESL experienced a 53.8% increase this year over the previous year. So many more students going into that, going into ESL coursework. Title II of WEOWA, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, requires programs that provide measure their success outcomes of their students. And they use something called measurable skills gains to track that. So of our AEL participants who persisted beyond 12 hours of instruction and took a post-assess, a post-assessment, that's the group that we have to measure measurable skills gains for, 47.7% of them achieved an MSG. So that's something like employed after exit, median earnings after exit, earning a credential that would get a student a measurable skills gain. Historically, the department has managed a number of programs within the Iowa Skilled Worker and Job Creation Fund. Adult educational literacy that I just mentioned, as well as our intermediary networks have recently moved to, over to the Iowa Workforce Development. But the department still manages these three programs. The Gap Tuition Assistance Program for non-credit and short-term non-pel-eligible programs. And that program served over 1,000 students this past year. The PACE program, which is Pathways to Academic Career and Employment, that provides wraparound services for those students and served over 2,500 students this past year. And then finally, our largest, financially speaking, the WTED program, Workforce Training and Economic Development, supported over 44,000 students this past year. Okay, so as a former advisor, this is my favorite slide. I think our student success outcomes measures are something that I get most excited about. Are we getting students to the finish line achieving their academic and professional goals? And so this slide shows the three-year graduation, transfer, and success rates for the fall 2020 cohort. We're excited to report increases in all three of these outcome measures. Graduation rate is up 1.9%, transfer up 2%, and success rate up 3%. Moving these high-level outcomes measures is not easy. Department and college staff, faculty, and administration have spent considerable time and energy and resources into improving these numbers. One primary strategy has been our guided pathways effort. This is a series of institutional reform efforts designed to support the four pillars of guided pathways, clarifying pathways for students, getting them on a path, keeping them on a path, and ensuring their learning. So there's a number of institutional reform efforts around those four pillars. And I think that's largely why the commitment to those institutional, high-level commitment to these strategies is getting us some movement in these numbers. So we hope that that will continue and we'll see those numbers continue to increase.
Is there, is there a dropout rate?
Yes, so that's part of the equation. So this would just be, so of the fall 20 cohort, the number that graduated, transferred, or both, which is the success rate. And the remainder either dropped out or stopped out.
Were only intended to enroll in one offering or got hired by an employer or all of the things, right? The thinking is a bit different, right? Because we do have so many programs where students get hired out before they complete the program. We calculate this as a formal success rate. We need institutions to be accountable for getting students to a credential. But that doesn't necessarily mean that students didn't get value from some sort of some amount of education before they leave, right? So they're all there voluntarily. So sometimes they're taking elective offerings and whatnot, right? So this is, I think, a fair assessment of, of what's going on, but I think you have to understand it in that community college context. This rate is much higher than nationally.
And in the labor market, a number of our programs, our students are starting employment before they even complete their program because it's, they're such a need. So sometimes it's hard to keep them in to finish their program. Yeah.
I understand. Yes, I'm looking for maybe the student comes and doesn't find success or a job anywhere. I know they're out there. I don't know how many there are or how that compares. Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. This slide looks at, gives us some national comparison data. So it's the voluntary framework for accountability, which was designed by the American Association of Community Colleges as an accountability framework specifically for as an accountability framework specifically for community colleges, more with the open access mission of community colleges in mind. The VFA metrics provide an important national benchmark for our colleges. And we're able to compare our outcomes against approximately 120 community colleges nationwide. They cover a number of metrics, but this slide highlights two. First, the six-year graduation and transfer outcomes for the AY 16, 17 cohort. Iowa saw a graduation transfer rate of 60.2%. So that number is up from the previous year, which was 59.6. And it exceeds the national benchmark of 53%. It's worth noting that the national figures saw a slight dip while in Iowa, we're seeing that number increase slightly. Another key VFA metric is the percentage of students reaching 30 or more credits in their first year, as that correlates closely with retention and persistence. Iowa saw a rate of 53.6% on that metric, which was up from 51.9. And again, exceeded the national rate of 42.6. So I, um, Iowa's above the national benchmark on both of those. Moving now to cost of enrollment at our community colleges. The average in-state community college cost of enrollment, which is both tuition and fees combined, increased 3.6% over the previous year. Average cost of enrollment per credit hour is $213.28, which places Iowa in the 87th percentile of cost of enrollment nationally. Institution with the lowest cost of enrollment in the state is DMAC at 185 per credit hour. And Northwest Community Colleges, 230 per credit hour, and that's the highest. When looking at financial aid received by our students over the past year, we see that students received a total of 252 million in aid. The vast majority, 80%, being federal sources. One metric tracked by the Bureau is default rate. In the most recent cohort, only two students defaulted on their federal loans. And that's due to the availability of COVID relief dollars. Many of the institutions chose to pay off their students' outstanding debt. Typically, that number, like in 2022, that number was 3.5% and in 2021, it was 11.4%. So that's a more typical default rate. Our largest state aid program for community colleges is the Last Dollar Scholarship Program, critically important for our Iowa's, Iowa's community colleges. The program awarded over 32 million to over 10,000 students during the last academic year. And that brings us to the end of our slides. We're happy to answer any questions. And as a reminder, Vlad is on as well. Thank you to him and the data team for all their work, um, compiling data for, for this report and many others.
Are there any changes proposed to Last Dollar Scholar this year?
That would be a question maybe for Eric.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. So I, as a part of the governor's bill, uh, the smarting bill, which also had a subcommittee two days ago. There is cooperation of expected family income, $3,000, because last year's which is a hundred plus K for a family, or 225. And then there is so, uh, and student who is in a program, uh, receives priority in getting a second year award, the priority as a new program. And then there is a further focus on, um, training programs and, uh, post-secondary opportunities in, in demand, um, sectors, uh, as defined by the state. The community colleges. Did I miss anything, Jeremy's?
No, I think that's a good summary.
Okay.
So the community colleges serve special education students as well. Do you have any data?
Something we like at, I, we don't have that, the number of students and accommodation. Students are able to bring their IEP with them as they trans, transition to the community college and receive similar accommodations. We don't track that data in our MIS. I don't know, like, the number.
That's an important question.
Yeah.
Question. We'll go back and look at that. It's really.
So if a student, um, he is at track, I guess, I mean, cause there are students who probably would come in there, maybe not have an IEP plan, maybe just, you know, I mean, need an accommodation or whatever, or maybe need a planner, something like that to help them get through.
Many are, yes, many students do. And it's something we look at their process. And it's something that the pro individual programs have to look at during program review, how well they're serving students with unique, with unique needs. So it's something that's discussed quite a bit. Um, we have not yet discussed, should there be a data flag so that we can track data, the numbers better? But we ask more about process for serving those students during accreditation visits and, uh, program review discussions.
We have data on some special populations, let students with disabilities, academically disadvantaged. But that's, as Ince had, probably not the whole realm of students who are special.
That's fair. We can go back and review. Too good suggestion.
Good suggestion.
I think not too long ago, there used to be courses that high school students had to take. They're kind of, I'll call it, community college prep class so that they could take an English or math where they weren't quite ready for the credit course yet. I'm assuming those are still being offered and do we have any data?
That's a great question. So developmental ed offerings, um, community college developmental ed offerings or curricula made available to high school students, right? So in those scenarios, the courses would not be, you know, concurrent enrollment. They don't generate supplementary waiting. Usually what we see in those scenarios are the community college providing the school district with their curriculum so they can, their instructors can deliver those courses. But sometimes they do contract with the community college on delivery. We would have data on that and we could come back to you in March when we do our joint enrollment report and maybe talk briefly about that.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious as far as is that number about the same? Is it going up or down?
It's a big question. We could. Yeah, yeah.
I just detailed, just kind of just a general idea.
I want to say five years ago, we put together a lengthy report on this when we were doing dev ed reform, uh, efforts, uh, with the colleges that kind of predated our guided pathways work. And we, so we did a really thorough analysis of what was going on and provided some recommendations because it sort of can tighten up the alignment between secondary and, and community colleges so that students get kind of a seamless handoff. And there were some great pockets of innovation, uh, but nothing that was scaled, right? So, um, now would be a great time to do a follow-up. If, and we certainly have some data and we can come back and talk to you about in March.
And I know overall colleges are moving away from dev ed, zero credit courses to more co-requisite, where students are in a credit course, getting additional supports, because often many students don't make it past those dev ed courses that don't receive credit. So there's been a real effort nationwide to move to a more, more of a co-requisite model. So we've definitely seen that in Iowa.
So just that, that dev ed is, is that kind of like that remediation?
Yes, it's non-college level math or English. Yeah. There are real barrier to retention and persistence for students. So there are much better models.
I would just like to acknowledge, I know Paul Inison has transitioned to a different role. And, um, I know she's had a lot of integral work over the years on data development and system development and would just like to send her a, a thank you and acknowledgement of all of her hard work over the years and contribution she's made to helping support these data systems and get them to where they are today. So thank you, Paul.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll pass along.
Yeah, we wish her well. Thank you.
Anything else for community colleges?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Anything else?
Yeah.
For today's meeting? Aaron Dunn?
Sure.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, everybody. Steve here. Uh, we're still on. I haven't heard, um, if there was a German or anything at the conclusion of that presentation. And the room's currently muted.